May you come to order, please? Thank you. Roll call, if you would, press your present button, please. Escobar? Oh, record the roll. Thank you. Staff announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of announcements. First of all, we have several withdrawals that I want to point out to your attention tonight. Thank you, sir. Item 13, The Grove, Section 1, Golf Course Improvements have been withdrawn. Item 24, Amendment Williamson County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Second Principal Dwellings has been withdrawn. And finally, dropping down to item 29, Final Plat Review for Chardonnay, Section 2, has been withdrawn. Additionally, I would like to -- additionally, I'd like to report that last week, we had another Grassland Community Meeting. It was well-attended, and we will hopefully have another Grassland Meeting sometime roughly around the time school starts, something in the range of end of August, early September. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have no other announcements.
Thank you, sir.
(inaudible).
I heard a voice.
Oh, thank you. We forgot about one thing, too. Thank you. We do have a different face here tonight as well, Mr. Brian Richter. Mr. Richter has joined us. He's taken John Kane's place. He suffers from the same malady that Mr. Kane did.
An architect?
Yes, an architect.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Richter.
We were happy to have him here, and
Good, thank you, sir.
He's recovering baseball father, like I am, which is why I'm late tonight.
Okay, is that the end?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of Minutes of May 9, 2013, any corrections?
Second.
Motion made in second. Prepare to vote. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Any old witness?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Done. Consideration of Consent Agenda. As most of you know, if you wish to pull an item for separate consideration, please say so now, otherwise, we'll take the consent as a whole. Anyone? Say again? Item 13, Consent Agenda.
Item 13 is withdrawn.
Uh, it's withdrawn, okay? Anybody else? None? Take it as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with item 3, Brenns Valley Addition, Section 2, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $82,000. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of six months. Item 4, Brenns Valley, Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $40,000. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of six months. Item 5, Brenns Valley, Section 2, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $45,000. Recommendation, review at the July 2013 meeting. Item 6, Kings Chapel, Section 2C, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $145,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance, amount of $60,000 for a period of one year. Item 7, Silverstream Farms, Section 8, Maintenance Bond for Sewer, $20,000. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 8, Temple Hills, Section 16, Phase B, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $125,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance, amount of $135,000 for a period of one year. Item 9, The Grove, Section 1, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $50,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance, amount of $50,000 for a period of one year. Item 10, The Grove, Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Wastewater Collection, $55,875. Recommendation, extending current amount for a period of one year. Item 11, The Grove, Section 1, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $208,70. Recommendation, extending current amount for a period of six months. Item 12, The Grove, Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Wastewater Treatment Disposal System, Recommendation, extending current amount for a period of one year. Item 14, The Grove, Section 2, Performance Bond for Water, $75,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance, amount of $75,000 until September 14, 2013 meeting. Item 15, The Grove, Section 2, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $454,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance, amount of $136,200 for a period of one year. Item 16, The Grove, Section 2, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $650,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance, amount of $375,000, beg your pardon, for a period of one year. Item 17, Vale Creek, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $200,000. Recommendation, extending current amount for a period of six months. Item 18, Watkins Creek, Section 3, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $125,000. Recommendation, extending current amount for a period of six months. Item 19, Watkins Creek, Section 5, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $5,800. Recommendation, extending current amount for a period of six months. Item 20, Watkins Creek, Section 5, Performance Bond for Water, $17,500. Recommendation, review at the July 2013 meeting. Item 21, Watkins Creek, Section 5, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $225,000. Recommendation, extending current amount for a period of six months. Item 22, Watkins Creek, Section 5, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $127,400. Recommendation, convert to maintenance, amount of $28,220 for a period of one year. Now on to final plats, dropping in to item 31. Final Plat Review for The Grove, Section 3, containing 11 lots on 5.28 acres located off Arno Road in the 3rd Voting District. Staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. 1, the posting of performance bond in amount of $44,600 for wastewater collection system. 2, the execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement, submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And 3, submission of the final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on a Tennessee State plane coordinate system prior to signature and recording of the plat. And item 32, Final Plat Review for The Grove, Section 4, containing 35 lots on 19.59 acres located off Arno Road in the 3rd Voting District. Staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. 1, the posting of performance bond in amount of $413,000 for roads, drainage and erosion control. 2, the posting of performance bond in amount of $141,900 for wastewater collection system. 3, the posting of a maintenance bond in amount of $20,000 for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. 4, the execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement, submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And 5, submission of approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State plane coordinate system prior to signature and the recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions on consent?
Mr. Chairman, move approval with staff recommendation.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Beginning Agenda Item 23, Public Hearings. For those in your audience, if you wish to speak at the conclusion of the staff presentation, you'll be invited to come to the podium, and if you would, give us your name and address, and keep your comment to that particular agenda item. We would appreciate it. Agenda Item 23 is Amendment to the Williamson County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Maximum Gross Residential Density Within the Municipal Growth Areas 1 and Municipal Growth Area 5 Districts. Staff?
On May 14, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the update to the Williamson County zoning ordinance and official zoning map, and established an effective date of January 1, 2013. While administering the zoning ordinance, staff noted the omission of the maximum gross density for residential uses within the Municipal Growth Area 1 and Municipal Growth Area 5 districts. As a result, staff has drafted the attached amendment, which will govern the maximum gross density within both districts. Within the MGA 1 district, the maximum gross density will be established at 1 unit per acre. Within the MGA 5 district, the maximum gross density will be established at 1 unit per 5 acres. Staff recommends approval of this amendment. Staff also recommends that the attached resolution be forwarded to the County Commission for adoption.
Thank you, Erin. Questions, Erin? The non-residential structure, that is covered, I take it, in another part of the ordinance?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Will open for a public hearing at this time. If anyone wished to make a comment, if you would come to the podium, we would appreciate it. Anyone? I know this is really interesting to you. Last call. All right, we'll close the public hearing on this agenda item. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval with staff recommendation.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item 24 is withdrawn. Agenda Item 25 is a concept plan, concept sketch plan review for Blackberry Ridge containing 15 lots on 144.90 acres located off of Bending Chestnut Road in the 2nd Voting District. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Holmes is going to read this particular report, but before he does, I wanted to take just a brief moment to explain something that's related to this item and the next item. You'll notice that both of these items are concept plans, and you've probably also noticed from the staff reports that one of these items, item 25, does require a vote from you all, while item 26 does not require a vote. And I thought I'd just briefly explain why, in case you're confused about that issue. The new zoning ordinance refers to the first stage of the subdivision review process as a concept plan. As you recall, historically, the first stage of the process has been either called a sketch plan or a site plan. Sketch plans were for traditional subdivisions. Those do not require a vote, while site plans have been historically for planned resource conservation subdivisions, and those have always required a vote. Eventually, we're going to revise the subregs to be consistent with the zoning ordinance from a terminology standpoint. Until then, we're kind of operating under both sets of regulations. And so, the first item, because it is a conservation subdivision, is more akin to the old site plan and does require a vote, while item 26 is like a sketch plan, and because it is a traditional subdivision, will not require a vote. So I just wanted to explain that real quickly before you get confused about those items.
Thank you. Erin?
The applicant is requesting concept approval for a conservation subdivision in the Rural Preservation 5 zoning district. Approval of a concept plan, which was called a site plan under the previous zoning ordinance, is the first stage of the development process. The proposed development is located on approximately 145 acres and consists of 15 lots ranging in size from 2.7 acres to 5.2 acres. This results in a gross density of .10 dwelling units per acre. Eighty-seven percent of the proposed development site will be set aside as permanently protected open space, and the site's most sensitive environmental features, which consist of moderately steep slopes, slippish soils, woodlands, and waterway natural areas, will be contained within the open space. Access to the development is provided by an access road built in conjunction with the construction of State Route 840. The access road intersects with Bending Chestnut Road and was accepted for maintenance by the county in January 2013. All roads within the development will be publicly maintained upon completion of the bonding process. Water services will be provided by HBNTS. Wastewater is handled via individual onsite septic systems. At the time of this writing, the Williamson County Department of Sewage Disposal Management is reviewing the request. Approval is expected by meeting date. Concept plan is in order, and staff recommends approval with future submittals subject to the following. Preliminary plat must address the following. Number 1, identification of lots requiring engineered site plans per Article 13 of the zoning ordinance. Number 2, submission of roads, drainage, and erosion control plans for review and approval by the county engineer. And number 3, submission of water plans for review and approval by HBNTS. Final plat must address the following. Number 1, prior to consideration, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. Number 2, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number 3, establishment of performance bonds for water improvements as specified by HBNTS. Number 4, submission and approval of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for the same. Number 5, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number 6, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State plane coordinate system prior to signature and recording of the final plat. One additional item, Mr. Chairman, the Department of Sewage Disposal Management has approved this request.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item 26 is concept or sketch plan review for Hillsborough Cove, containing 20 lots on 34.40 acres located off of Hillsborough Road in the 9th Voting District. Staff?
The applicant is requesting concept plan review for this 20-lot traditional subdivision in the Rural Preservation 1 zoning district. The review of a concept plan, previously referred to as a sketch plan, is the first stage in the development review process. Such a request requires no formal action by this body. The site in question totals approximately 34 acres and is located on the east side of Old Hillsborough Road, just north of its intersection with Old Natchez Trace. The site is relatively flat, sloping downward from east to west toward the Harpeth River. Approximately 4 acres at the eastern end of the site is located within the 100-year floodplain. The proposed development consists of 20 lots, ranging in size from approximately 1 acre to an acre and a half, resulting in a gross density of approximately 0.59 dwelling units per acre. Just over 25 percent of the site will be set aside as common open space as required by the zoning ordinance. A portion of the Old Hillsborough Road frontage, which includes the existing residents, will be retained as a separate parcel and is not included as part of this subdivision. Any further subdivision of that remaining property will have to meet all applicable county regulations. Access to the proposed development will be provided from a single cul-de-sac on Old Hillsborough Road, which is classified as a collector roadway by the major thoroughfare plan. Due to the limited development potential of adjoining properties, roadway stubs are not proposed. The applicant has indicated that a cul-de-sac length variance and a design speed variance will be requested at the preliminary plat stage. The narrowness of the property, the limited development potential of adjoining properties, and the desire to curve the roadway were all cited as reasons that a cul-de-sac variance will be sought. The traffic shed analysis performed by the applicant indicates that the proposed number of lots is within acceptable limits based upon the capacity of existing roadways. A deceleration lane will facilitate turning movements into the site. HBNTS Utility District will provide water service to this site, while wastewater will be handled via individual septic systems. A number of items must be addressed with future submittals. The preliminary plat must address the following. 1, submission of roads, drainage, and erosion control plans for review and approval by the county engineer. 2, approval by T.DOT of the subdivision access point location, as well as the proposed deceleration lane improvements. 3, submission of water plans for review and approval by HBNTS Utility District. And 4, identification of critical lots demonstrating protection of the requisite percentage of natural resources. The final plat must address the following. 1, prior to submittal of a final plat, the deceleration lane improvements at the side entrance must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. 2, prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. 3, establishment of performance bonds for roads, drainage, and erosion control. 4, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of HBNTS Utility District. 5, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of appropriate performance bonds for landscaping. 6, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. 7, final approval of all septic systems for each lot from the Williamson County Department of Sewage Disposal Management. 8, dedication of right-of-way 30 feet off center line of Old Hillsborough Road. And 9, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State plane coordinate system prior to signature and recording of the plat. And one more note, Mr. Chairman, and that is that you have in front of you a number of pieces of correspondence that we have received this week from residents in the area.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Comments? Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. According to the report, this is zoned for 1 home per 1 acre? I mean, just in my vision of our new plan update, this area out there ought to be -- fall within the 1 home per 5 acre track.
Well, if the zoning is, in fact, essentially a 1 unit per acre zoning district, a lot of the correspondence that we received relates to your very point, which is, a lot of people felt like the -- or feel like the development is maybe incongruous with the area out there. But it is zoned RP1, which is essentially a 1 unit per acre zoning district, and historically, dating back to at least 1988, the property has been zoned to allow roughly 1 unit per acre.
So we're going to put 20 homes, right, just what appears to me, willy-nilly, in a large track subdivision, for lack of better words? So, I mean, I just, it doesn't seem to fit to me.
Susan?
I agree with Jack. And in reviewing the Rural Preservation 1 zoning ordinance, the conservation subdivisions are encouraged, and I would definitely encourage the developer to consider doing a conservation development rather than a traditional subdivision in order to fit within the surrounding community so that it preserves that rural feel, because it is, even though it's zoned for 1 acre, it is rural preservation, and I think that's the spirit in which that zoning designation was made.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
You wish to make comments, sir?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jason Goddard. I'm a landscape architect and a planner alongside Tim Turner with T-Squared Engineering. We designed the property.
Applicant not here.
We owe applicants the developers here as well.
Oh, I thought I said applicant. I'm sorry.
Kenneth Green.
Do you wish to make comments, sir?
We're just trying to put forward the best project we can at this time, based on the zoning that's in place. If you'd like, we'd be happy to go over our plan.
Thank you. Do you guys want to make a comment? I assume you're the agents for the applicant.
Yes, sir. We worked on the plan, and we've worked on this plan for the past several months in conjunction with staff. We made several alterations based on feedback we've received from staff along the way. I do have the plan here before you. I know there's been some concern or question over the character of Old Hillsborough Road. As you look at this plan before you, it may just look like a cul-de-sac in the middle of the property. I can attest that there was a lot more thought and consideration worked into the design of where the street is located, primarily within sensitivity to the aesthetic values along Old Hillsborough Road. I live in this area myself. As you drive on Old Hillsborough Road, the existing house is located here on the southern corner. The lot on Old Hillsborough would be set back at a similar setback to the existing house. The vegetation is along Old Hillsborough Road would be preserved as well. And then further, the location for the entrance was designed primarily based on the site characteristics. The vegetation you see around the edge of the property that was not drawn in, that's existing vegetation that's superimposed underneath this site plan. All of that vegetation will remain. As you travel north on Old Hillsborough, this strong vegetation area, as well as the existing homestead, will buffer the majority of the visibility into the project. And as you drive south on the project, due to the irregular shape of the property, how it kind of trapezoids out, we end up with some inefficiency that we've turned into an open space area that further pushes back any homes and any kind of visual distraction on the Old Hillsborough. The house number 1 would be set back, similar to the existing homestead, the homes within the community. Lot number 2 would be over 300 feet from Old Hillsborough, and lot number 20 would be behind the open space and be over 500 feet from Old Hillsborough. There's a lot of thought and consideration into where this lane came through and how that would be visualized from Old Hillsborough.
How deep is that lot, or track?
The track from front to back is probably close to 3,000 feet.
Okay. It looked like it. That's why I was curious. Thank you. Anything else?
Be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
You have any questions of the applicant's agent? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is the structure that is located on the site?
The structure that's
Yes, there's a little structure back there, a little, looked like almost, looked like inhabited at one point.
There's a small structure, maybe what you're speaking of.
Yeah. Yeah, back to the tail end of the property. Yes, sir.
There's a little shed back in there. I think it's a deck, and it was used by the existing owner. I'm not sure if it was for storage or what it was, but it's a little shed structure.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brogman, did you wish to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate this. I'll just be honest with you. I hope everybody took an opportunity to read the letter that I thought through and sent in your packets. I realize this is a concept plan. I realize that technically, legally, this is allowable under our zoning, but it really begs the question, what is rural preservation? Rural preservation can't be 1-acre lots. That's not rural preservation. That is suburban development. We are not a suburban area out there. If we've had this on the books since '88, why is there nothing else like that in this area, in Forest Home? Not one development. This is like trying to put a square peg in a round hole. It doesn't fit the character of this area, and most people in this neighborhood have no idea that there can be a 1-acre development. Everyone believes it's all 5 acre, because that's what we've gotten. There's an ethic out there, okay? This is why we look the way we do. This is the scenic, historic Harpeth River Valley, and it is so special. The thing is, it's a fragile fabric that makes up this area, and the stakeholders need to be involved in this discussion. Maybe this is a catalyst to look at this zoning and say, this just doesn't, it doesn't work. This isn't rural preservation. It was carved out in '88, and so when we tried to revisit it with the new comp plan, it just got shuttled back, because they said, no, no one would ever consider, you know, downzoning. But I'm telling you, property owners along this route feel so strongly, I'm not sure if some of them wouldn't voluntarily say, I'd rather have 5 acre zoning. There is tremendous market for small farms and large estates. The 2 that we've had, the 2 developments that we've had, Two Rivers and Hidden River, extremely large lots, 5 acres, 10 acres, 12 acres, then of course, you have small farms. farms out there. That's the character of this area. This is so out of place. I'm just asking the developer to please consider resubmitting something that is in keeping. I understand about landscaping, but once this starts, once, there is nothing like this. It is so out of the box that it's a shock. And like I said, most people don't know, there are a few people who through the grapevine have found out that this proposal is before you and are here tonight. Obviously, I'm not sure I understand why you're not voting. I understand the sketch versus the concept, but I would like to see this voted on, and I don't understand if there's a cul-de-sac variance, you know, isn't that something to be looked at? If that's a variance, then maybe that's something that shouldn't be in place. I mean, I don't need to be overly passionate. Look, it's 20 houses, okay? It's not 1,200, like being proposed in the growth boundary on Del Rio, but it's the beginning of chipping away something that people, that's why they live out there. If they want to live on a one-acre lot, they've got all of Brentwood. It's just unique and special, and once it's gone, it's gone, and all the people who want to be there for all those reasons are gonna say, fine, I'm out. It's just that important. I'm just trying to persuade the developer who's behind me to say, just consider something different. It can be incredibly marketable. People would love to have that three to five acre lot. They would love to have that 15-acre small farm. It's who we are. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate letting me speak, John.
Thank you, ma'am. I think, folks, that, and I guess I'm showing how long I've been on this commission, I think that zoning goes back to 72, because I don't recall changing that in 88. And I chaired that plan development back then, so I really think it goes that far back. Commissioner Brogman, at this juncture, I think maybe you have an opportunity as a commissioner to draft a resolution. I'll leave it with that. Any further discussion? This does not require a vote, but we need to discuss some more in detail if you have Mr. Fohan?
The variance that's being, will be asked for on the cul-de-sac, what is it as far as the length of cul-de-sac that's allowed and what they're asking for?
The subdivision regulations allow about 1,300 feet. I don't know the exact length of this, because the variance request itself would be made in conjunction with preliminary plat approval. But I think this is a good time to discuss this, because while there's no vote required, I think that it's beneficial to give, you know, to have an idea of how you might pursue or respond to this. It does exceed the cul-de-sac length listed in the subdivision regulations. You all have typically looked favorably on these requests in circumstances where the shape of the property or topography dictate. In this particular case, there are ways that they could redesign this so as not to need a cul-de-sac length variance. For instance, they could do a roadway stub to one of the adjoining properties, which initially they proposed. I think that in looking at those two different options, this is probably preferable. The other thing related to the cul-de-sac length variance is that one of the reasons they're requesting it is because they've introduced several curves into the road. The initial plan that we saw was essentially a straight shot, which aesthetically and for traffic calming reasons, I think, would be less preferable to this. So that's a long way of saying I don't know the exact extent of the request at this time, but those are some of the reasons why they are requesting the, or will be requesting the variance.
Don, that would probably be right at that 3,000 feet he indicated.
Which is quite a variance. The other thing I have, and this is something that will come under the final plats if we get to that point, but I'm concerned about the septic systems on there, that will have to be pretty good soil to be, to perk the way it's set up, the way I'm looking at this thing right now. But of course, that will be towards the final, but this is, I'm concerned about when we get into one like this, ending up with people trying to get off-site sewer, which I don't think any of us would agree to. Thank you.
You're welcome to come back, you are the applicant.
Tim Turner, T-Square Engineering. We've already performed a soil mapping of that site, and it's very good soils. If you look on your drawing, each lot, I've gone in and outlined areas A and B, and have shown that on there, and we have such good soils that pretty much all the lots are five-bedroom homes with a few four bedrooms in there. So we really do have good soils. We've got the final soil mapping approved through the county already. Larry Robinson has already gone through, and I've sat down with Brian Corwin and Larry, and they have actually given us a conceptual approval letter for the soils. So it's shocking, but I've not seen many subdivisions that have such good soil.
If it gets to the point where off-site, this commission has never looked favorably on off-site.
We don't need any off-site. Each lot has its own, and has enough to where we've got 10,000 to 12,000 square feet per lot, per soil area. So, yeah, I mean, we've got four- and five-bedroom homes, soil areas allowed.
Thank you. Anything else?
If I may, just briefly to shed some light on the variance regarding the cul-de-sac length, the maximum cul-de-sac length is 1,300 feet. The street you're seeing before you is approximately 2,200...
2,000.
About 2,000 feet.
And it's longer because we are serpenting and...
I thought you said it was 3,000 feet to the back of it.
From front to back of property.
Property line. We stopped well short of the property line with our road.
With the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, cul-de-sac.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it appeared to me, I didn't see it that well. I thought it went all the way to the back.
No, we got floodplain property back there, so we stopped way short.
My mistake, thank you. Any other discussion? Doesn't require a vote, if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna move on. Last call. Agenda item 27, preliminary plats. Preliminary plat review for Arrington Retreat Phase II containing 38 lots on 20.58 acres located off Nonsville Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
The site plan for this development was approved in February of 2003. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for Phase II of the development, which consists of 38 lots on 20.58 acres. The proposed preliminary plat is identical in layout to that depicted on the site plan, excuse me, site plan, I'll get it out. As identified at site plan review, a number of items were to be addressed at the preliminary plat stage. All applicable items have been addressed to staff satisfaction, including identification of critical lots and placement of applicable notes on the plat. The applicant is requesting a variance for the right-of-way from the minimum required 50 foot to 40 feet, and a design speed variance from 30 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour on the curve of Great Angelica Way near the intersection of Crescent Moon Circle. The plat is in order, and staff recommends approval of the request and the requested variances. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items will need to be addressed. Number one, prior to final plat consideration, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney for planning and environment. Approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. Number two, establishment of the performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number three, establishment of a performance bond for water improvement in favor of Nolanville College Grove Utility District. Number four, establishment of a performance bond for wastewater collection system. Number five, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number six, providing two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the final plat.
Thank you, sir. Comments? Thoughts? Jack?
Looking at this plat, it's got, it talks about how many acres, 38 lots, 1.87 acres of open space. I mean, again, we just did the plan update, and I thought we were trying to go to all these conservation easements. Is this, how would this fall in with that?
I'll answer that. That is that the overall subdivision for Arrington Retreat has at least 50 percent open space. It's just this one individual phase has less than that, and that's pretty normal that we see it broken up like that.
Yes, sir?
What's the reason for the reduction in right-of-way? The reasoning for the request of the reduction of right-of-way?
Yeah, we started, that's something we started doing, I can't remember the first subdivision, might have been Silver Stream, when they wanted to put sidewalks perhaps, and we don't want them in the right-of-way, so they wanted to be closer, you know, to the roadway, so we said, okay, since we don't have utilities, if you're gonna get your utilities out, then we'll support a reduction in right-of-way. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval for recommendations, staff?
Most maiden sagged it. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote? Vote now? Record a vote? Motion carries, thank you. Continuing preliminary plats is agenda item 28. Preliminary plat review for Hart's Landmark containing 45 lots on 49.60 acres located off of Heartland Road in the 8th Voting District. Staff?
The concept plan governing this development was approved at the May 2013 meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for this 45-lot conservation subdivision. The preliminary plat is consistent in layout with that depicted on the approved concept plan. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items must be addressed, the final plat must address the following. One, prior to consideration, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to recording of the final plat. Two, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Three, establishment of a performance bond for water and sewer improvements as specified by the City of Franklin and Berry's Chapel Utility, Inc., respectively. Four, establishment of a performance bond for landscaping improvements. Five, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Most maiden sagged it. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote? Record a vote? The motion carries, thank you. I'm sorry. Motion does carry, thank you. Agenda item 29 is withdrawn. Agenda item 30 is the final plat review for Sparkman Subdivision Large Lot Easement Subdivision Reapproval, containing five lots on 43.25 acres located off South Crowes Road in the 4th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick note, there is a revised plat in front of you, and as a result, I will be reading from a revised report. The final plat for this large lot easement subdivision was approved by the body at the March 2013 meeting. However, the plat was not recorded within the required timeframe and has since expired. The applicant is now requesting reapproval of the plat, which is identical in layout to that previously approved, with two minor exceptions. First, Lot 2 now shows a modification to the western setback of the building envelope as 50 feet rather than 100 feet, as previously depicted. Second, Lot 3 has revised the soil areas to meet requirements set forth by the Department of Sewer Disposal Management. The final plat is in order, and the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved the request. Staff recommends approval, subject to the stipulations of approval set forth at the March 2013 meeting. Thank you.
Questions, staff? Reapproval with a couple of minor changes? Most maiden sagged it. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote? Vote now? Record it? Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item 31 and 32, we're on consent, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have anything else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Hang on a second.
Neglected to point out, we left an article in front of you from thenoxnews.com regarding Tennessee's ethics policy on planning commissioners, and three of them picked up a $10,000 fine for failing to file their paperwork. That's the bad news. The good news, it's none of you guys. So, well done, but keep doing it.
Yeah, you keep reminding us.
We shall, we shall.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? We are out of here, thank you.